Call this regular school committee meeting to order Monday, October 18th, 2021 at 6:00 PM. Mr. Walsh, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
School committee members and student reports. School committee chair report, I have nothing to report at this time. Resource Committee.
Resource Committee, Ms. Cregan is going to give a brief report.
Building needs.
Building needs. I'll do.
You do resource.
Yeah. I got there a few minutes late and Ms. Cregan took over for me and I let her take care of that. It was just a short report. This past week, we approved the draft minutes of the June 16th and September 2nd meetings. There were no grants to submit, no grants to accept, there were no donations to submit. The end of the year report was submitted by Mr. Shalafu. They gave a report on the low income reporting update, a little brief discussion of transportation and enrollment update. The October 1st enrollment was 53, 57.
Thank you. School building, any questions, comments, concerns, seeing none. Resource Committee. Was that resource just now?
That was resource.
That was resource. Sorry, school building needs.
Sure. Okay, so, it's been so long since I've done one of these, but there was a lot. We covered grants, we covered donations, we talked about the, we are actually 100% eligible for low income for broadband, so that was from Eileen Spinney. So again, broadband being an essential, it should be like, you know, water and sewer and that, everyone should have it, but that's not the case. We also moved on to our current student population is at 5357. We do have a kind of a bubble in the third grade, so there's also, we discussed permanent subs and we wanted to provide more in the way of sick days for our permanent building subs because of their, you know, they're there for us. They do a fine job and we're very happy to have them. And the other matters we discussed were the, well, I think it's actually coming up on our agenda about the redistricting plans. So, Pittsburgh High School is actually at 1279 students and I think, I think that was it for my notes. Pete, Jean, anything to add?
I think you covered it all.
Questions, concerns, comments, seeing none. Policy Committee, Mr. Horgan.
Nothing new to report, we're still working on scheduling.
Thank you, sir. Any questions or concerns or comments, seeing none. Student Support Subcommittee, Ms. LaBelle Pierce.
Yes, we met October 7th and had a few items on the agenda. One, which is, you know, before us tonight, the FHS Music Department Walt Disney trip to Florida, which is, has been put off since the spring, right, of 2020 and is rescheduled for the last possible time for December 2021. And that would be the only option without kids losing money that they put into the trip. So, we put language together that we would like to have the full committee endorse about expecting all students who attend this trip to be fully vaccinated or to have a negative PCR test 72 hours before they would leave for this trip.
Thank you very much.
So, thanks. Requirements for attendance include proof of vaccination or a negative PCR COVID test within 72 hours boarding the plane. Vaccinations are available at numerous locations in Pittsburgh, including Community Health Connections, Nichols Road, Burbank. We also included in the language where testing is available, Monday through Friday, 8:30 to noon, 1:00 to 3:00, and that's actually Community Health, too. Vaccinations are.
Available at Pittsburgh High School.
Right. So, we've been getting emails from Mr. Roach right about different clinics that have been made available, but Thursday, October 28th, from 9:00 to noon could be a first or second vaccine shot. So, that is before the committee tonight. We also got an update about, Sally's been working with youth librarian at the Pittsburgh Public Library and has developed some bookmarks with LGBTQ resources that are in plans to distribute to the schools.
Right. So, what we have, the Pittsburgh Public Library, which is of course the best library in Massachusetts, was steps ahead of us. So, there is a bookmark that I got the PDF template for. So, I've made up 200 bookmarks and I've distributed a giant stack to Pittsburgh Public Library. We will be getting more to Luisa Fernandez and to our schools because this is good information. The bookmarks include the names, the titles of books and the authors for LGBTQ support issues. Very happy to have those, so.
Thank you. And on that note of library services, we also included in our meeting an update from Mr. Thompson about library services provided at each school. And as a committee, we endorsed the goal that by that next year, it would be part of the recommendations that a licensed librarian would be housed at each one of our schools. Right now, we have schools where paraprofessionals are doing the, some, had been doing some lesson planning from, at the libraries and we really think it's important that all the schools have that resource, particularly because we'd like to have the ebook service, Sora. It's called Sora Overdrive, which you can only have, and by the way, Sora has ebook collection of hundreds of thousands of titles, including always available titles, so that a class could read, could all read the same book if they wanted to. And they also have the ability to set the language in, or read books in Portuguese and Spanish and Chinese, a variety of languages that are offered through that program. But to do that, you have to have a licensed librarian throughout the district in all your schools. So, that was a really important goal for us. And on that note, I know the Dr. Cochrane at the Pittsburgh High School Library has just recently sent a survey out to families in the community about the services that they get through the Pittsburgh High School Library. So, that's the kind of information that we could be collecting across the board and I expect that we'll invite her back, or invite her to kind of explain what the signings of that survey were. And then finally, an agenda item was the annual update for the athletic department. Craig Antoski had an emergency that night, so he's here presenting anyway about that, I imagine, right? That's the agenda item. So, that's it.
Thank you.
Question. Jane, was there any discussion on the ban going to Florida about testing when they return? We're testing before they go to Florida, so that we're not bringing COVID to Florida. Florida is a hotbed for COVID. What about those students who go and come back from Florida that might not be in the pool testing? Was there any discussion of that?
No, that's a really good point and that was an oversight on our part, yeah. I'm not sure what you want to do tonight about that, if we are in a position to talk about that, but I, I mean, I think it's a good policy to expect that if.
I think it's a good policy, but I'm more concerned about the return trip.
No, right.
Our kids going, which I'm all for.
Oh, I understand that.
And if some, not all of the kids at the high school are participating in the pool testing, what protection do all of our students have coming back?
The Board of Health did meet last Thursday and for extracurriculars in the fall or beginning in the winter, they will be, they're in the process of drafting a order to require those participating in extracurriculars to participate, be required to participate in the safety check pool testing. So, that would extend to members of the band, so when they come, before they leave and come back, they would be tested.
So, the language already exists to deal with that?
It's in the process of being, as we speak.
Did they have a date when that would begin?
I don't have the date yet, I don't have the order.
Okay. So, Pete, is that something that you'd be comfortable with if we know that language is coming?
Yes, yes, because I'm all in favor of the ban going. I know it's been a long time that they've put this off, but I know Florida is not, for me, not the safest place to go. And we're making sure our kids are good going down there. I just want to make sure that our kids are going to be safe coming back. But I'm going to vote for that from my part, but I just want to know if that's got a little bit more protection.
Thank you.
Could I just clarify, it is on the agenda item, it's that we are talking more about this tonight, correct?
Yes.
There could be more discussion.
It's under the action items.
Yeah, okay.
You could have more discussion, yeah.
Okay.
And Tabitha is here tonight to talk about that, too.
Yes. Any further questions, comments, concerns, seeing none. School Personnel Committee and Executive Committee, there is nothing to report at this time. Student Rep.
It's just me tonight, Andrea had not make it, but I would like to start off with, last Friday, we had a Spanish Heritage One celebration, it went very well. Sadly, was not able to attend. I will say it was a great success throughout the district, throughout the school. I heard very great, amazing things from students and staff that were able to go, so really hats off to all that really put it together, it came out great, so I'd really like to thank everyone for that. I think we'd like to move in. This week is our Spirit Week across the high school. Every single day has a different day. Today was Class Colors, tomorrow is Costume Day. And I'll end with Friday on the 22nd, which is 22nd, is the homecoming game at Friday before at 5:00 PM, there's a tailgating event to go to if you want to march down to the Crocker Field. Then not too much to report this week, the school store is now open at the high school, so if anyone is interested in getting any new rated gear, every Friday you will be able to. I would like to touch upon again, too, there is a vaccine clinic on the 28th and there's also a school improvement council meeting on the 28th at 6:00 PM, which is his second for the year. Parents and students are welcome to come. For students, it does count as community service hours. Then also to point out about how pool testing truthfully is a really good resource, I will say, knowing in my classroom, seeing how many kids are doing it, I feel like it is truly, really underused at this point. We only have a few kids truly going, you know, to ways for what it really can be. So, like, everyone would encourage it. I mean, I'm fully vaccinated and I still do it, I can say that personally for me. I see, it's a great resource, really for anyone to do. It takes like a minute to do outside of class and it, you know, gives you security, you know, every single week. So, then also to end off, heading towards the end of the quarter, which is the last day of the quarter, is November 5th, so make sure everyone gets in that final last drive and all the work in, so have great grades.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well said, okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
If I could just make one comment that Jack was talking about in Pittsburgh High School. I would just like to comment about Abby Stone and what an outstanding job that Abby did for the golf team at Pittsburgh High, winning the class, what, choose it B, is it, yeah, the championship in winning first place and just wonderful.
Next, approval of the minutes from the previous special school committee meeting. Make a motion to approve the minutes. Motion made and seconded, all in favor? Aye. All opposed, is unanimous, thank you. Executive session not at this time. Communications.
I have one.
Yes.
Thank you. Well, two, actually. The first is that there's a card going around our school committee members because two really wonderful custodians who have given decades of their lives to Pittsburgh Public Schools have retired, Wayne Shaw and Chip Turigny, and I've had a chance to work with both gentlemen through the years. I know that Pete and others of us did get to know them and they had extremely high standards, were wonderful with kids. Chip actually innovated a recycling program with the kids at South Street some years back, again, before COVID, but they were, they were great, very, very steady and did a super job, so we're, you know, we're very appreciative and, you know, wish them well in their retirement and I'm sure they'll be really busy because they're, they're, they're just busy folks. So, I wanted to acknowledge them. I also wanted to say that on Saturday, November 13th at 1:00 PM, yes, I am wearing a Union Army hat, because the 15th Massachusetts Volunteer Infantry will visit Forest Hill Cemetery again. We are having a special Memorial Day event, a tribute to the veterans, in particular the soldiers who fought in the Battle of Balls Bluff, Virginia in 1861. So, their salute will be followed by a walking tour in which volunteers and veterans will tell the stories of the individual men who fought. I am researching some of those stories, so is Kathy Flynn of Pittsburgh Historical Society, so we are actively looking for folks who would like to be readers, especially veterans. We'd love to help, we've got some veterans who reached out to us, which is great, but we've got really interesting stories and we will also laminate those stories on wreath hangers that will be next to the graves in question. So, the Veterans Day weekend will be a really nice way to commemorate our soldiers. And this event is sponsored by the Pittsburgh Cemetery Department and Pittsburgh Historical Society with help from Stratton Players. So, no experience needed if you would like to be a reader, just reach out to me, sallycregan@verizon.net, or call the Historical Society and we'll figure it out, but we'd love to have you.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Any questions, comments, concerns? That's going to be a wonderful presentation, it always is. Thank you, Ms. Cregan, for helping to put that together. Continuing under the Communications category, Delegates for the 2021 Mass Association of School Committees and Mass Association of School Superintendents, Joint Conference Number Third through the Sixth, 2021. Anyone interested in nominations?
Oh, absolutely. So sorry I will not be in attendance, but I know that if we nominate Mr. Pete Stevens, he will, he will do an excellent job on our behalf.
I don't know what we're going to do when you're no longer here, because I don't know who's going to.
Running for another four years.
You go to all of those, all of those, you're always there.
I'm going to keep going.
Thank you, thank you.
I'll second that nomination.
Can we put that in the form, I'm sorry?
I'll second that nomination.
Okay. Nomination of Pete Stevens to be our representative, the school committee's nominee. Do I hear a second?
Oh, that was me.
You second, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, none is unanimous, thank you, Pete.
Thank you.
Public comment section, I don't believe there is anyone wishing, unless there's someone in the audience wishing to make public comment, seeing none. Moving on, Superintendent's Report.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Tonight, I'd like to go a little bit out of sequence on the items listed under the Superintendent's Report. As the school committee was having a conversation about the trip to Florida Disneyland with the band, I'd like to ask Tabitha Greenlee, who's our music director, to come to the podium and give a little summary of the trip and what's changed since we originally planned it and some of the considerations that you're planning, as we plan to go back to Florida, or plan to go to Florida.
Thanks for having me again tonight. So, the last time, it was almost two years ago that I was here to get first approval for us to travel to Disney, which was originally supposed to be in April of 2020. We first postponed to June of 2020, thinking, like everybody at that time, that this was only going to be a two-week thing, and here we are now. So, we have now postponed for the third time. This is kind of the last opportunity for us to be able to still attend the trip because of the way that the airlines are functioning in order for us to maintain those credits that we have already paid for and the students have already paid towards our trip. So, there's been quite a few turnovers in terms of our students, because obviously the kids from the class of 2020 and 2021 are no longer going to be attending the trip, but we do have a good set of kids from the freshman class who have now joined the trip and many kids who were part of our VIP band program in the spring of 2019, who joined the marching band in the fall of 2019, who had initially agreed to come and participate in that first spring of 2020 are now freshmen at FHS. So, that's actually pretty cool that having that experience in the VIP band kept them connected enough that they absolutely made that transition to FHS. So, we'll be traveling on December 16th. We've just, I just received confirmation that our flights would be both in and out of Providence. We were initially going to be swapping, one down out of Connecticut from Bradley and the other from Manchester, but now they're both from Providence, that's an airline change from JetBlue. So, when we arrive on the 16th of December, that's our travel day, so when we arrive, we'll kind of situate our luggage. Friday will be the day that we will be at the Magic Kingdom to have our performance, marching down Main Street, USA, which is a big deal for us and a big application process in order for us to be eligible and accepted to perform, to be able to march down Main Street, USA, that's very, very cool. And we'll be able to do it with our brand-new uniforms that were helped to be purchased by the Wallace Foundation in part back in 2020 in order for this trip. We will then have a Your Instrumental Workshop on the Saturday and that's about a two-and-a-half to three-hour workshop with a Disney kind of music educator, where we will be working with them on a specific piece of music that will be synced with a clip from a Disney film to be determined, that they put together and we have a copy of to return home with, which is very incredible. It's just an amazing opportunity for the kids to grow as musicians with another music teacher, you know, dedicated education expert who talks to them about kind of what is possible within the music field, what they do at Disney and kind of the opportunities present for music there and kind of at large. And then the other day is at, have I done all the parts? So, we do one day per park and we'll then fly back on the Monday. I think I've got those dates right, I think it's Friday, Saturday, it might be Saturday, Sunday, but I think it's Friday, Saturday. I should have double-checked first.
What was the return date?
The 20th, Monday, the 20th of December.
Questions? Thank you, Ms. Greenlee. We have one? Yes.
First of all, I want to congratulate you and the band on your bronze medal at your recent competition.
Oh, yes, thank you.
Well done, I appreciate that and I'm pleased and happy that you'll be representing not only the high school, but the district down at Disney when you finally get there.
Yes.
And I hope you'll be able to, some kind of video that we could actually see part of the performance, part of the parade, so I wish you the very best and thank you for your patience and for all the band members for their patience and I'm sorry to hear that there are some band members who would have gone but have since graduated and are no longer able to participate, but thanks again for everything that you do for the band, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, Ms. Greenlee. Thank you.
Oh, okay.
Okay. We've been talking about it for a couple of years.
I know, I know.
Are any of the kids going that were going to go before that just said that, I know we had talked before, last year you, when somebody missed out.
So, our number right now is 25.
25.
25 students will be attending. And any student who has expressed interest to go, whether, it has always been our position kind of from the, our band parents organization, that any student who has expressed a desire to go but has a financial hardship, that we would support them to be able to attend. So, any student currently in the Pittsburgh High School band who wants to go to Disney is going to Disney, but there are students whose families have decided that they do not want to send their student to Disney or students themselves that have said, "I have no interest in going," which, you know, is surprising, but, you know, that's their choice.
Are we still having, is our VIP program still going?
I hope that our VIP program will begin again in the spring.
Okay.
Yes, because we've obviously shown some great success in that very first year and it would have been implemented again in the spring of 2020, but obviously, things have just been put in a great pause, so I hope that we'll be able to return this, this spring to do so.
I hope so.
Yeah.
I thought it was very successful. Thank you. I'm going to make a motion that we take that, this action item out of order, 21-106. Vote on now.
Second that motion.
Motion made and seconded. So, we're voting on 21-106, number 20-21, approve the Superintendent's motion for the Disneyland trip. Requirements for attendance include proof of vaccination and negative PCR COVID test within 72 hours of boarding the plane.
I'll make a motion.
Motion made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, is unanimous, thank you.
Yes, thanks very much.
Okay, thank you, congratulations, Tabitha. So, next up, I'd like to recognize a couple teachers in the district. We actually have one of the teachers here with us tonight, so I'd like to welcome Ariya Rivera up to the podium and the mayor has a citation, he does have it present, so.
Am I pronouncing Ariya?
Yes, Ariya.
Ariya. Thank you so much for your efforts. Ariya Rivera was nominated by Principal Jeremy Roach to be recognized by the Latinos for Education, for exceptional work in the Pittsburgh Public Schools and within her community. The State of Latino Education Event took place on October 7th via Zoom and brought together local, state, and national educational Latino leaders. Congratulations on this important milestone and thank you for all your contributions to our Latino students and families. And the city of Pittsburgh, be it hereby known to all, hereby offers its sincerest congratulations to Ariya Rivera in recognition of being honored at the State of Latino Education for your exceptional work in the Pittsburgh Public Schools and within your community. The entire citizenry extends its very best wishes on this memorable occasion and expresses the hope for continued good fortune given this 18th day of October 2021 by Mayor Steven
Thank you so much. I'm just going to think this out a little bit. Good evening, thank you so much for the recognition, it's a pleasure, especially being in front of my family. This is what I do it for, not only my student, but for my children. As that former ESL student and Pittsburgh High School Red Raider, it's not only my pleasure to serve to the Latino community, but also to the city of Pittsburgh. Thank you for the support, I appreciate that.
Mayor, should we get a photograph of you and the Superintendent's with Ms. Rivera?
Sure. Go ahead. Yep, and this is a, yeah. The next citation, Longstreet Middle Schools Becky Colo, named 2021 Massachusetts STEM Teacher of the Year. So, she, is she?
Becky couldn't be with us tonight and actually, this award was bestowed upon Becky or she was notified of the award in May of 2020, but because of COVID, the celebration and recognition event happening at Patriot Place will not happen until this Wednesday evening. So, we'll be going down to Gillette Stadium and participating in their STEM event with, I would assume, Mr. Kraft in attendance. So, Becky was a fire. So Becky was a finalist in 2019 for this award. And she just exemplifies the grit and perseverance, and they saw the good work that she was doing. And she was notified to be the recipient, the winner of this award last year. And with that comes a $5,000 check to the school. So we're very grateful for her efforts and behalf teaching our children. And Patricia May, Principal of Long Joe, is here tonight to accept on her behalf.
Great. Just to give you folks some idea, the people watching at home also, this is what Ms. Colo said. "When students learn to 3D print code, create virtual reality tours, build a hydroponic garden, or create stop-motion animation videos to show their learning, I've learned new skills along with them. My reason for teaching is to help my students find their own reasons for learning so their education can never be limited by my current knowledge or experience." Wonderful.
Mayor, before, can I interrupt? Sorry. Just so everyone knows, I wanted to add in that this week throughout Massachusetts, it is STEM Week. And Pittsburgh Public Schools is participating. So throughout, the theme for STEM Week throughout Pittsburgh is See Yourself in STEM. And throughout the week, Pittsburgh Public Schools will be highlighting former Pittsburgh alum who went into the STEM field on our social media platform, talking about their opportunities that Pittsburgh Public Schools offered them, in addition to their college and career STEM field that they're in. So we'll be highlighting one or two graduates each week, each day this week. In addition, each school this week will be participating in a variety of different activities. I just wanted to share a few of the activities that kids will be participating in. We have the Museum of Science with us this week, doing animal adaptation presentations. We have Unitil working on electricity demonstration for us. In addition, we have some hands-on activities with iRobot, drones, and coding. And we also have Pittsburgh alum Tara Sweeney working with us on the Postcards to Space program that we participated in this past summer. So we'll be doing that again. There's a lot more going on. I encourage everyone to check out their school's social media accounts, in addition to our district website, with more information on STEM activities happening throughout the district this week. Thank you.
Thanks.
Did you want to, yeah, do a picture quickly?
Okay.
Bob, can I take it with my camera?
Yeah. Definitely would they believe? I don't think so. I don't think so.
Is he going to, maybe I should read the, should I read the other citation?
Oh, no.
I'm ready for you.
Bob, if I could just say, it's especially exciting when there are alumni who come back and teach. Yes.
Oh, absolutely.
So that's exactly what we've been talking about and just kind of encouraging sort of that homegrown connection. So that, that's the best.
We're looking to grow that. So, yeah, definitely. Thank you. So next up on the agenda, we have Craig Antassi, our Athletic Director, who was unable to complete his presentation to the Student Support Subcommittee last week. But today, Craig is with us tonight. And Mr. Thompson will drive the presentation. And Mr. Antassi, you can just speak to the slides and add your, you know, context and commentary as we go forward. So, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Jokolo. Thank you all for having me. It's warmer in here than it was outside. Okay, so I think the genesis behind having me come and talk was, it would be really nice, I think, for the school committee to understand what's going on in the world of athletics on a kind of yearly basis. You know, maybe a check-in once a year. I think that that was the reason behind it. And unfortunately, I wanted to come to the Student Support Subcommittee to kind of run some ideas by you, but the tyranny of the urgent got me. So, you know, here we are tonight, so I'm not going to throw too much by you. As you know, we have about 20, we do, we have 20 distinct varsity programs that run seasonally now. You may see that we're missing one sport in the wintertime. If you look, there's no swimming. Swimming is in jeopardy due to COVID across the state. We're really struggling to gain access to pools. When we lost the pool at Pittsburgh State, that effectively eliminated the Monty Tech Lemister-Fichberg Swimming Co-op. So it's not dead, per se, but it's in jeopardy. So it's not listed as an active program for us right now, but if the opportunity presents itself, we'll add it back in. What I wanted to focus this little talk on was really the fall, because I can't really give you an annual update, because last year was just so chaotic. It'd be, you know, it'd be out of context to discuss everything that happened last year. So instead, I thought, let's discuss what's happening this fall. We've had 326 high school participants this year, which breaks out to about a 25% participation rate. So one in every four students walking the hall at the high school is engaged with athletics in some way, shape, or form, which is fantastic. I add at the bottom, 87% of our families have requested an athletic fee waiver this year. Right? Our athletic fees are $50. Any family that is having financial hardship, they're able to request that waiver. And I just wanted to put that out there, just so everybody knows, you know, $87 for every 100 that is supposed to be taken in by the Athletic Department and transferred back to the students. We just can't collect it, given the current state of the economy and our, and our population. So I just wanted to put that up there, because I feel like that's an important piece of information that you might want. Okay? Mr. Thompson? So what I wanted to focus on is give you a flavor for who is participating, because I just told you, one in every four students at the high school is participating. Now, this pie chart I showed you, or on either screen as we see, is exactly representative, I mean, within one percentage point of what you would see if you looked up on the DOE portal for Pittsburgh High School, what our student population looks like. Okay? So I just, I throw this up here as context for really the next slide, because in the next slide, I want to show you the difference between male and female. Okay? So by gender comparison, you can see on the left is our participation by the subgroups as a total. On the right, at the top, is the males. On the right, at the bottom, is the females. And that green section is our Latinx population. And one thing that we're seeing in Pittsburgh High School, and it's not only Pittsburgh High School, it truly is across all Urvans, and I'm involved with the Urban Athletic Director Subcommittee at the MIA. Is this, is a, I would say, kind of a participation gap when it comes to our Latinas in our population. There's big, there's questions out there on how to close that gap, how to bring, get more involvement specifically from that subgroup. And there aren't a lot of great ideas right now. However, what I can say, the best idea I've heard is to listen to what they want. Right? And one thing that they want, like our female populations want, they want volleyball. They love volleyball. Now volleyball, we haven't been overly successful this year, from a record perspective, but from a team perspective, we have great participation numbers. The students love being there. And that is an undermet, like, I would say, there's more demand than we currently have supply for opportunities to play volleyball in this city. I think, just as a gut, if we were to explore middle school volleyball going forward, we would have an outpouring of opportunity, or of demand to pursue that. Right? And it would meet kind of the wants and needs of our kids. Two years ago, right before the pandemic hit at Memorial, we had a really student-generated volleyball club. And they had more students in the gym than they knew what to do with. And what I speculate is, we could even have that at Long Joe and McKay, and we might even be able to fund, have our own little volleyball intramurals in the city. And that's something that I'm really keen to get off the ground, but we've been kind of ground to a halt due to COVID. So I think if we're listening to our students at this snapshot right now, that's the picture I'm getting. And I think that it, you know, it's an honest reflection of where we're at. Okay? So we're going to look to close that gap, is kind of my point. We're going to really work hard to close that gap. Now, when I went home for the pandemic, what you're seeing there up on the screen now is all of the schools, the 26 schools that make up our local league, our Midland-Watchusett League. We're broken up into four sub-leagues now. The yellow, the green, the reddish color, I'm kind of colorblind, so I'm guessing that that presents as red, and blue. And we have the A, the B, the C, and the D. And the way we generally group these schools is by population size in the school. And for a long time, it was just a very gross number. Right? You would just take whatever number was reported in the SIMS report, and that's the size school you were. Well, working with the Urban Athletic Directors across the state, that does not accurately represent our student population, because a student in Pittsburgh looks very different than a student in Dover Sherborne in some circumstances. Right? Not in all, but in some. And it's a really apples-to-oranges comparison. So working with the Subcommittee of the Urban Athletic Directors, we actually pioneered, it's called the Competitive Equity Tool. And that is that gray column that is showing a competitive equity tool-adjusted enrollment. And what it does is it takes into account both the stability percentage for the school, right? So the way you can read stability percentage, just, you know, I would say in very simple terms, if you were talking about 100 students and you see us at 85.2%, if we round down for whole numbers, 85 every, out of every 100 students begins the year at Pittsburgh High School, but then also completes the year at Pittsburgh High School. That means we turn over 15 students, right, out of that 100. So from an athletic standpoint, we can't really be categorized on the 15 students who are turning over, right, out of every 100. I mean, those students may never get the opportunity to participate in an athletic season. Right? They're just transient. So that, we use that as a baseline for an adjustment. And then we also take into account the high-needs percentages of the students. So that could, a high-needs student is anyone who, oh, let's see, has ever been involved in the ESL program, has ever been involved with the SPED department, right, is categorized as economically disadvantaged. Okay? You can see that we are the highest-need school district in the MidWatch. Right? And I highlight that because if we try to compare our population, which I heard was quoted at about 1,273 as of today, somewhere in there, that, ballpark, right? And maybe being too specific, but that puts us as the same size as Algonquin. In Algonquin Regional, if you look at the high-needs for Algonquin Regional versus us and the stability percentage, and you find Algonquin in line three, Algonquin has a stability percentage of 98. That means for every 100 students that start the year, only two leave. And they also have the high-needs percentage of about 22%. You know, we have 40 percentage points higher. So we are not the same school, to compare us is really unfair. Through some really hard work, this has actually caught on at the state level and at the local level. So this year, we actually were positioned, not with those schools, but with schools of like size. Because what the CET formula does is it reduces our enrollment a little bit, right, to provide competitive equity. Because equity is about fairness, it's not about equality. Right? It's about, right, equal opportunity. Right? So I want to highlight some things right now. If you look, we are competing with schools now, like Hudson, Marlboro, Gotten Dunstable, even we dip down into the Quavon, Lunenburg, Tingsborough, Littleton area. And on my next page here, as we flip forward, I just want to hit some highlights, because it's the fall. So let's hit the good stuff. As, oh, yeah.
Just a question on that last slide, Craig.
Yeah, sure.
Does it say just 9 to 11? Is that grade 9 to 11?
Yeah, because when we, when we enrolled, when we aligned last year, seniors were going to play no meaningful, meaningful part. Right? And you can't guarantee who the eighth grade, like, how many eighth graders are going to matriculate to the high schools. So we looked at only the 9 to 11 slice. And if you look at Lemister High, if it looks low, there's an asterisk there. And it's because that is not taking into account their VOK program that's in the school. So some highlights. Currently, our football team is 4-2. We're ranked 11th in Division II out of over 30 teams. We look like we're going to have a really strong shot at getting into the playoffs. And we have our final regular season matchup against Neshoba this Friday night, and it's homecoming. In field hockey, we're currently in the playoffs. We just got matched up with Grafton. So in the Central Mass playoffs, we play on Wednesday at 3 o'clock. The girls currently are ranked 30th in the state. The top 32 teams make it into the state playoffs. So playing with some competitive equity, our girls are really showing that they can compete. All they needed a little bit of confidence and the right matchups. In boys soccer, similar spot. We're ranked about 30. Okay? And we play North Middlesex tomorrow night. That game is very important for us. If we play well, it's going to, all we need is one win. One win guarantees us a seat at the state table. As Mr. Stevens mentioned, Abby Stone, playing from the same tees as the boys, she did not take the further tee, she did not play from the, from the women's tee. She was the co-medalist in MidWatch B, shooting a 76 at Northern Spy, one off the MidWatch A winner who shot a 75. Right? This is really a great accomplishment. Abby is a super-hard worker, great student at Pittsburgh High School. I know we're all super proud of her. And then down the bottom, this is probably our biggest achievement, something I'm really proud of, which is so cool. We now are running our inaugural season of esports, competing in League of Legends, Rocket League, and Super Smash Brothers. Mr. Fennel Bustos up at the high school is the coach. There is an active group of about 25 students with a bunch of sub-teams inside, competing against schools like Natick High School, Watchuset Regional. I believe we had a match-up with Southwick the other day. And it is going smashingly well. It's engaging a whole new subset of student, students in the Athletic Department that might not have stayed after school or been part of this extracurricular without it. And esports runs two seasons a year. Right now, we're in the fall, and we also run a spring season. So that was kind of the snapshot I wanted to get out to you all, so you can kind of see where we're at in athletics. And then I guess I'll stop talking and take any questions you have.
Good question. In fall sports?
Yeah.
Is it just field hockey and volleyball that are girls' women's sports?
So.
Cheerleading, okay.
Yeah, so in the fall, soccer is a girl's, so technically, boys, males could participate in field hockey. Males cannot participate in the girls' volleyball, because there, we offer a boys' volleyball, which I apparently didn't list in the spring. If there is an equivalent sport for the opposite gender, then you can't participate in that sport. In a sport like field hockey and cheerleading, we actually have a co-ed cheerleading team this year. We have male participants on the cheerleading team.
Thank you.
Yeah.
At the beginning, you were mentioning just the volleyball demand and potentially an intramural league for volleyball at the other two middle schools. What's, what's the biggest obstacle in the way for doing that? Is it just initiative or?
It is, okay. Gym space is an issue, certainly. There is some equipment issues that, but that, that's the easy stuff that can be solved with some money. I think the trickier thing is finding the right people to oversee it inside of the school and then finding that time to actually get it off the ground. Once a program is running and there's some momentum behind it, it's easy to keep it going. My job, Athletic Director, AD, right, the joke is, AD is all duties. Right? I find myself doing weird things, you know, from cleaning a toilet to mopping a floor. I'm doing random things all the time.
To giving directions to locations.
Yeah, right. Right. So, so getting something like that started, Mr. Horgan, is really, it is finding that window of time. it is finding that window of time to put enough energy to catalyze it. And then once it's off the ground, it is running. And I just think COVID has been so disruptive. We haven't been able to give it enough attention. But that is so high on the priority list. I can't even begin to tell you. I've already been down to Rhinegold School to speak about intramurals. We were just actually chatting about intramurals before I, like before I came up here. So this is right on, I wouldn't even say it's on the back burner. It's starting to move to the front burner to make it happen now. But we definitely do need some upgraded equipment in some of these gyms to really make it work well. Volleyball, you know, a proper volleyball net setup where they're actually corded and set into the floor so they can be removed easily.
That's exciting. I remember I was the manager of my girlfriend in high school, was the manager of the girls' team at my high school. That was a lot of fun. So, yeah, the nets, setting up the nets and all that, it's a lot of, it's a big process. But that sounds great. It's exciting that it's on the front burner and looking forward to that.
Yeah, thank you.
Craig, are we teaching volleyball, do you know, in, maybe Brittany? There was always a unit that was taught volleyball in the PE classes.
The kids still love it, it's their favorite.
Is it still being taught?
Yeah.
Yeah. Is it, that's why I've suggested we invite you, Craig, to either resource building needs and pupil personnel. What, so what are your needs? Are there needs for more equipment? Do we need the stanchions or what you call them for the volleyball?
Currently, we have the cores in the, I like to call it the wooden floor or the Grutchfield floor in the fieldhouse and in the front rubber court. But we could really use another set of fixed cores that are drilled into the ground so we can put the stanchions in, so we could have three courts at once. I mean, we have excessive demand for volleyball. If we were to offer and do that at Memorial and Long Joe, again, it's just, it makes it so easy to get those things in and out versus the rolling ones, which take up space in the gym. I mean, not that, not that the other equipment doesn't, but it's, I would say, a more durable setup. And if we were going to actually play at a competitive level, because there are middle school teams that are competitive, that we could play, we would need setups that would be appropriate. We couldn't play on the portable nets.
I'd like to see what we used to do where, you know, they were starting in class, and then we had intramurals that were held after school. And then if we do play with other middle schools. I know Memorial always, we used to play faculty, we used to have faculty volleyball after school, and we would.
Maybe we used the same nets.
Play with. You still doing it?
Yeah, we probably have the same nets.
Yeah. But those are the things we need to know, Craig.
Yeah.
You know, that's why we're always asking Eileen Spiny to come in, you know. What do you need? How many more computers do you need? Do you have enough backup in case they go down? So I've suggested to Mr. Jokela that we invite you in and be part, because all of the other directors come in and talk to either building needs, resource, or person, pupil personnel. And, you know, just so we find out what your needs are so that we can help.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
I just wanted to say thank you, Craig. I can't imagine the headaches involved in running the athletics in this district with COVID. Hopefully, the public health order is going to be very helpful so that students who are engaged in extracurricular activities will have to test on a weekly basis. But I, so just to follow up on the intramural, what about, so you're talking about intramural perhaps as a goal for the middle school and maybe elementary, but what about at the high school? What about a club kind of? I mean, would that be something that would reach that same goal of getting more young women or students in general involved?
Yeah, so the last spring before we were all scattered to the wind like tandoori seeds, we had an intramural volleyball that we actually ran co-ed. And it was well-attended. I mean, it was more drop-in, it wasn't a formal league. But, you know, three days a week, we'd take the nets out, we'd set everything up, and there were pickup games. And it was packed every single day. And what I liked, the best part about it was, it was a cross-section of students who may not commingle in the halls of FHS. But the ball and the volleyball court and ball are like this great equalizer, right? I thought that was a really interesting melting pot. So I would love to see that stuff come more. I think what I had listed before is we've got 20 athletic programs.
Right.
Some of those are legacy programs that, if you think, we can continue to run programs because we've always run them, or if we listen to the needs of our students, there are some programs that don't have great participation. And maybe something like a club sport, right? Or an adaptive choice like, you know, again, I'm going back to middle school because it's a direct example. Instead of running the middle school, let's say softball, that has very poor numbers, we did middle school volleyball, which has great numbers, right? Maybe that's a better choice. And those are, those are the type of things that we have to just be willing to be flexible and kind of forward-looking with. But at the high school level, Gene, yeah, I mean, I would love to see intramurals up there. Sometimes it makes it difficult because the intramurals can only really fit in between the seasons without pulling kids away from sports and you kind of, you know, shoot yourself in the foot.
I did have another question too about the tennis courts.
Sure.
What is the, you know, I played out there this summer, and they didn't look that good. So I'm just curious if that's something that we could bring before building needs? Because I, my guess is that it needs a lot of investment.
Oh, yeah. There's still the erosion issue going on. I guess if you were to look at the softball field from the tennis courts down to the right side where there was an issue before, it's not getting better. Some of the cracks in the floor from when it was, in the playing surface from when it had been resurfaced before are now open, but wider than they were originally.
Yeah.
It's definitely an issue that needs to be looked at. I think that that would get to a point that Superintendent Jokela had mentioned to me earlier. You know, some of the facilities that we have really, we need to look at because this is, this is a study I don't have time for, honestly. However, in my crazy wandering, like wanderings, I wonder if I could prove out a study that would really show athletic, schools who were early adopters of good surfaces, right? How, I would speculate that they have seen a boon in athletic accomplishment while other districts who are lagging behind fell behind with their accomplishment. And I'm being very political in what I'm saying, right? So the tennis court is most definitely an issue right now, needs to be looked at. But we don't have massive demand for tennis anymore. So it might make sense, instead of putting a huge amount of money into refurbishing that five-court area, maybe we should look at relocating the tennis court and putting fewer courts, but in a place where it doesn't require as much upkeep, right? I feel like that tennis court's kind of falling apart. You guys have already put a lot of money into it, and you're right back in the same spot again. It may be something that might need to be revisited, like really thought, looked at, thinking outside the box.
I know there are an awful lot of things that are going on today. And many, many years ago, when I was in elementary school, Mr. Sessino, our PE teacher, taught tennis to the fifth and sixth graders. And we did it in the winter at Nolan School Gym. I know we don't, you know, but it was taught in the elementary school. But there are so many things going on. And I know, and Mr. Sessino wasn't the athletic director, but he did everything you do, and I think he was just a wonderful teacher. But we know, I've talked with Mr. Shalafu about tennis courts up there and maybe the relocation or, because it took like a whole rebuilding that needs to be done because it was done, I think, on basically landfill. And it's now shifting, so.
I mean, we're a community resource as well. And I mean, if you go back to Crocker Field and the tennis courts down there, I don't want to lose our identity as a community resource too. I think that brings more people to support the school system, you know? But anyway, thanks.
Are there still tennis courts at Crocker Field?
The tennis courts at Crocker Field are currently used as an outdoor fitness center. The surface would not be playable. You wouldn't want to run around out there. But it does serve a purpose as an outdoor fitness center right now and is used.
There were two tennis courts where the scoreboard is.
Yeah.
That's where they were located before.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. Okay. Any other questions?
Thank you very much.
Well, thank you for having me.
Thank you, Craig. So continuing on the agenda, I'd like to just give the school committee and really the community at large just a reminder of health and safety best practices as we continue in-person learning here in Pittsburgh. And I'm going to look at my computer because the print is a little small here. So as we've been doing during the pandemic over the last year and a half, just as a friendly reminder that everyone should wash their hands well and often use hand sanitizer when not near soap and water. Try not to touch your face. Wear a face mask when you go out. And really, that's really when we are inside the school buildings here in Pittsburgh. But when you're going to local businesses, feel free to wear your face mask for extra protection. Follow your community guidelines. Our community guidelines here are from the Pittsburgh Board of Health. And when you do go out into public, leave at least six feet of space between you and others, just being safe and trying to make sure everybody stays healthy and safe to learn, live, work, and play here in Pittsburgh. Some tips on the, for taking care of yourself. Number one is, as our nurse leader pointed out, is hopefully not to spread the virus by getting the virus. A couple of the best ways to prevent that are by way of vaccination for COVID-19 and the flu. As was mentioned earlier, I think by Gene, there are local pharmacies now also offering the free flu vaccine as well. So to prevent yourself from getting ill this winter, either from COVID or the flu, there are vaccinations available. Again, just repeating, washing your hands, using hand sanitizer, wear face masks, things that we're all doing in the schools. Follow what your local Board of Health, the Pittsburgh Board of Health and Department of Public Health, CDC are saying. Be aware of, you know, six feet spacing when you are out in public. And one of the most important things, especially as we do enter the cold season for students and staff is, if you don't feel well, stay home. We don't want you coming into school and potentially spreading a cold or any potential virus. And when you do cough, please cover your mouth and when you sneeze. And lastly, when you do leave a room, take a couple minutes and clean and disinfect the room. So it's my public service announcement for health, safety, and cleaning protocols here. And this will be posted on our website. And we also have translation available in Spanish as well. Okay, Mr. Thompson is transitioning to the next presentation here. Okay, so I thought I'd take this evening to give the school committee and the community a general update on redistricting, which has been discussed off and on at various school committee meetings in relation to the Crocker Elementary Project, which was recently approved by the City Council and MSBA's Board of Directors as a 1 through 5 elementary school. But just to talk about the redistrict in general, why are we doing it? This really started out of brainstorming with the Crocker Elementary School project when we looked at a variety of different school models, school sizes, grade configurations. And what was our driving concern was what is best for our students? And one of the things that came out of that was to have the 5th grade relocated in the elementary school grades. The other thing that came out of the visioning, and this will come up in the next slide here, is clustering grade levels. And during the visioning process with Frank Locker, one of the ideas was to cluster K, pre-K, K1 and 2, and then 3, 4, 5. And at that time, we were, you know, visioning and looking at a bunch of different scenarios. And that's when we were looking at perhaps having a large K through 8 school district where 6, 7, and 8 would have been a separate cluster within that one school. That project would have been too large in terms of both enrollment and financial feasibility. So we went back to the drawing board over the last few years and looked at what would be best for Pittsburgh. And clearly, returning grade 5 to the elementary schools was a very high priority of those in attendance at the visioning sessions over two days at Pittsburgh State with Frank Locker. But also looking at, how can we make this happen? And one of the things that came up out of that brainstorming was creating a pre-K kindergarten center. So just to show the, I guess, the graphical, or not graphical, or artistic representation, you can see that there are a number of clusters which represent different grade levels or aggregation of grade levels. And again, these orange squares are the center physically of where you would walk in. You know, you could probably spend five or 10 more minutes going through all the little dots. But the concept here is really that there would be groupings of grades based on the development, academic, and social-emotional needs of the students. Again, just as I mentioned earlier, during the summer, the City Council did unanimously approve the Crocker project. Here's just a schematic visual representation. That project is now in the design phase. And over the next year, the architects and owners, project managers, will be looking to design a project that will meet the financial budget of the city and also the educational goals of the school district as we have communicated them to the MSBA. So just to provide a quick summary to the school committee and the community, I thought I'd try to create a table to summarize what our school configuration is now and what it could look like for next school year, school year '23. That's the way we identify schools' years, is the year that they end. So it would not be for this year. And Crocker, Rhine, and Rhinegold would both convert from a pre-K through 4 to a 1 through 5 grade configuration. Probably one of the biggest changes would happen at McKay, which is currently a pre-K through 8 school located on the campus of Pittsburgh State. That school would become a 1 through 5 elementary school. And then the school that would have the biggest change in terms of the age of the population would really be South Street Elementary right now, where it would convert from a pre-K through 4 elementary school to a pre-K and kindergarten center. Long Joe and Memorial would both change from being grade 5 through 8 as grade 5 returns to the elementary schools at Crocker, Rhinegold, and McKay and become 6 through 8 middle schools and absorb the grade 6 through 8 students currently enrolled at McKay. There are no changes planned for the high school grades, 9 through 12, whether it be Pittsburgh High or Goodrich Academy. And this does align with the Crocker Elementary School educational plan, which was approved by the MSBA and also the Crocker Elementary School project plan. And Crocker, right now, slated to be constructed. The project is expected to be completed in February of 2025. So right now, we begin our, I'll call it our homework phase or our logistical review of really getting down into more of the details, looking at the neighborhood zones, looking at the. at the academic, social, emotional development, specials, needs, and the specials meaning our extracurricular needs of, of all the students, pre-K through 8, to make sure that we can meet those or continue meeting those. Also looking at teachers, licensure and reassignment. We'll have a separate management labor committee to work on that. Transportation, looking at reviewing and revising bus routes if necessary. And lastly, school start times. This is really where we'll be spending, this slide or the topics here where we'll be spending the most time, just making sure all the pieces of the puzzle will fit together here. And just a quick timeline, tonight, we're providing an update to the school committee and the community in general watching on FATV. We'll be recruiting redistricting committee members, representation from all stakeholders, staff, school committee, parents, to make sure that voices are heard and input is included as, as we move forward with the redistricting. And we are, our goal is to have a meeting of this newly formed committee by the end of this month. And we'd be meeting regularly throughout the year to review the programmatic offerings. And, and also as we're, as we're doing that, looking at how we can really create a, you know, a pre-K kindergarten center that's a major asset to the community and prepares our students for success in the first grade when they move to that, those schools. And again, just trying to look at it from a, when would this begin? August of actually 2022 would be when students would move to the new school configurations. And for the students currently at McKay, Rhine Gold, and Crocker, the students in grades 1 through 4 would all stay at those schools for next year. I think that's it. So that's a brief summary of the, the redistricting, where we're at, the logistics that we need to, you know, still go through now, and again, start bringing together stakeholders, getting some input, and sharing the plan and the updates with the community as we proceed throughout the year. Questions, comments?
That's a huge change. I mean, just moving from the grades from the middle schools, I mean, on the graph, it looks like you're just moving one number over, but the logistics and the personnel behind that is absolutely massive. So getting the teacher involvement, department involvement to see if there's any bubbles or anything in particular that's going to come up will be huge, but that's a lot of work. Looks great.
Is, I don't know if you're looking in the audience, but both of the middle school principals who are here tonight are both nodding their heads, as is Mr. Shalafow, who used to be a middle school principal. Yeah, so there's, there's a lot of logistics to work out still. And the good news is it's only October, so we have plenty of time to do that. And we thought we'd announce this now because really, in four months, we'll be here to start talking about the budget and then where staff are, you know, distributed to match this redistricting plan. We'll all be shifting around a little bit, so.
Awesome.
Yeah, thank you.
It is exciting. I feel like there needs to be some mechanism in place early where it's not just a one-way communication out to parents, but there's actually an expectation that they must, almost like a, you know, read receipt, you know, like a red receipt, just something that, because so much of our communication in, in this district is so impressive in how it communicates, but it still goes, like you, you can talk to somebody about something that we've been talking about for months and they've never heard about it. And so I really feel like whatever happens, there has to be that mechanism in place where there's a positive step that every family has to take.
I'd just like to weigh in. As, as the parent of two former 5th graders, I, I would have applauded this, you know, five years ago. And I think, yeah, that this is what our, our kids need and what our parents would like. And I think that, again, we have such nice turnout for the elementary grades. I think having those conversations at, you know, events at our elementary schools would be helpful because then, again, they're hearing it in person versus on the social media or getting some note forwarded. We, we have such good turnout at elementary that it seems like that's a nice place to, to break the ice. I am talking to a lot of residents in that current moment. And there's, the parents of the elementary kids are, they're, they're on top of stuff. But the, again, the middle school, the high school, they're, they're a little more detached and we all know that. It's just, it's sociological, it's developmental. But I, I think people will be really pleased with this direction. And I think when they hear about it, and again, hearing it, about it in person would be, you know, I think is a, is a good way to launch. So to have those conversations at elementary events as, as they come up, and middle school as well, I, I think that's good. And I don't know whether that, you know, means coming up with like a, a discussion flyer. Again, it's like putting together committee, you know, we want, we need you to, you know, be part of this, which again is very intimidating to people, but just for them to know this, this is being discussed. And we welcome your input, like over and over. Because the input I, I have heard is, oh, I can't believe they went off to 5th grade and they're still so tiny and all that. I hear that like a lot. And I bet you guys hear it a lot.
Yep.
The 5th graders were moved to middle school about 20 years ago. And it was strictly for economic conditions and it had nothing to do with age-appropriate moving. But we did not have the space and we were closing buildings and we had to reconsol- consolidate. And I know people are going to be happy to have the 5th graders back. I know I was principal at Rhine Gold when that happened. And I know it also upset because middle schools were operating very nicely with teams, true middle schools. And then they brought in 5th grades and the 5th grades were not really middle schoolers and they had separate homerooms and they were not teaming. There was a lot of things that weren't happening that are going to be much easier for you in middle school now at 6, 7, and 8 and putting your teams together. So I'm very glad to see them going back.
Yeah, and I, I think, I mean, just remind the public and everyone else. So this is something going through the school committee. That's exactly as it should be. This is not something that, you know, is someone's idea somewhere. This is something that, that the entity of the school administration and the school committee are in collaborative, in, in constant collaboration. And here we have something, you know, a really big, good, new idea. So from us, we, we get to, you know, encircle the rest of our stakeholders and community members and the forthcoming little, you know, 5th graders who get to stay in their elementary school, which they love. And then the 6th, 7th, and 8th get to feel like, oh, they were, they were the big kids. And that, that's good. So, because my, my second child who went 5th grade was intimidating. And 6th grade, again, didn't really happen. But anyway, I, I just, we're doing what we should be doing. I'm really glad to see that and say that. So thanks.
I just want to make one more comment. Just like to thank the mayor for his keeping funding of the school meeting in more than net school spending, which has helped us do some of the things that we're doing. So thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Peter. And that's, that's a credit not just to the administration certainly, but the council as well. So we thank them as well.
Before we get to the school improvement plans, as we're talking about schools and grade levels, I thought I'd just ask Mr. Thompson to provide a brief update on school choice and the action item for you tonight about 3rd grade enrollment.
Thank you Superintendent Jokula. I'm here tonight to talk to the school committee regarding our current enrollment status in 3rd grade. Currently, 3rd grade throughout the district is our highest enrollment and we have 469 students in all our, in all our elementary schools. So I'm here tonight to ask the board to consider closing school choice for grade 3. Right now, our numbers are between 26 and 27 per classroom for 3rd grade. And we would like to ask the school committee to vote to close school choice in grade 3 because of the high numbers.
That's right now, Mr. Thompson?
Yes, right now.
And make a motion to approve 21-104, 2105, approve the superintendent's recommendation to close school choice for 3rd grade only for the remainder of fiscal year, 21, 22 school year.
Motion made to
Second.
Close, to vote yea on 21-105. Been made in second. It all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? It is unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so now we get to the school improvement plan portion. And tonight, we only have the two middle schools, grades 5 through 8. We originally planned to have the middle schools and the high schools, but we're going to let the high schools have their own night as the middle schools are having their own night tonight. So I don't know if either you, Brittany and Tricia, if you flipped a coin to see who wanted to go first?
He's ready.
I made the decision for them, Mr. Jokula?
Okay, there you go.
Is it appropriate if I sit here?
Sure, yeah.
Nice to see everybody. So the, since I've, I've been here the last two years, this is my third school year as principal of Memorial, and we, and I am thrilled to be embarking on what I'm confident is going to be my first full school year in the building. So my first school year as, as principal at Memorial, we wrote a school redesign plan in, in which we were recipients of the school redesign grant, which has been integral in a lot of our school improvement efforts. But, you know, what is important is the context of having two incomplete school years in the building. And though we are having our first school year that will be complete altogether, we have certainly made amendments to our school redesign plan to acknowledge all of the, the turns that our student learning has taken during the pandemic. So this is at least a snapshot of where our school stands in the big picture in terms of our MCAS achievement right now in ELA math and science comparatively as we sit in the district and as we compare to the state. Now, you know, you'll, you'll notice that we're, we're catching up comparatively at least in ELA. We took a slide in math and we have some work to do in science. We are all chasing that golden number of 500. That's our goal that we'll talk about a little bit later. And these are, these are scaled scores that we're talking about here. But what we can look at in the next slide is, this is a little dense, but where we were at last year is we made a tremendous amount of progress last year, even with our interrupted school year in the building. We were at nearly 491 for an average skill score in ELA. But what you'll notice, and I tried to make some quick color coding, the green cells are all areas that despite being out of school, Memorial still made achievement progress in all of these areas.
You can take that off if you want.
Okay, yeah, this will make it easier for you to understand what I'm saying. So despite being remote learning and, you know, the stuttered start, stuttered starts of the school year, we were able to make achievement progress in all of these areas in green. Now, some of that was really moderate growth, growth nonetheless, where, you know, many schools were seeing slides. And so this is something that we're, you know, tremendously proud of. And the, the white cells are where we did not see any decreases in our achievement, but we were able to hold on to what we gained in 2019. So that's something that we're proud of. The yellow is where we are seeing learning loss. Now, the things that we're most concerned of here is certainly our, our English language learners' progress. And we're not, even though we are seeing progress in our student, in the progress that our students with disabilities are making, it's, the work certainly isn't done. What is worthy of note is that even though our students are, our student growth percentile rates were not as high in 2021 as they were in 2019, our students were still achieving at higher rates. So something worthy of note, but we are still making adjustments to get our goal this year is that students are getting upwards to high, moderate to high growth, which is in the 60th percentile range. That's where we want to be between 60 and 80, 80th percentile in student growth. So if you go to the next slide.
Just to add, Brittany, to this, those growth scores, the yellow on the right, those are pretty much average growth scores throughout the state this year.
Yes, they are.
They're in the 30s. So although they're not between the typical 40 and 60% like they like to see, but because of COVID, this is the overall average scores.
Yeah, comparative to the average student growth rates, we are on par.
Yep.
So this is a very yellow, yellow graph. So we did see, you know, learning loss across the board, or I should say achievement loss as well in math. There are logistics at play here. So certainly, we are, we discovered across the state. And we saw this in our diagnostic testing through iReady and also in DESI debriefs about math achievement, is that learning in the remote context and through the pandemic, there, there were, was an expectation, an expectation's not the right way I want to put that, but this is fairly typical of what schools were seeing in math specifically. Now, at Memorial, there's a little bit of realism at play here in that 40% of our math department was out on medical leave or other leave due to a number of circumstances. So our math department was not at its best last year. So we were, 40, 40% of our department was not operable last year. And we know that the teacher matters. So this was, I don't want to say that we can come back from this, but our circumstances are certainly a lot more favorable this year than they were last year. So a large variable that played a piece here is no longer in play. So when we're making it, when we're looking at sort of root cause analysis, we know that that's not something that we need to make an adjustment for this year. Because what we did see was that, sorry, John, is that we made a, a lot of growth with the training and the adjustments that we had initially put into place in 2019. So we're building upon the 2019 strategies that we were using with the people that we had put that, that training into place with. And we're going to continue building upon some of that this year.
So does he like to see the 40s in this category too, or better?
Well, better. I mean, yeah, I mean, we're, we're shooting for 60 is good, 80 is better. I mean, the higher we can get.
Yeah.
These, these numbers aren't favorable.
Just, I know that the 2021 numbers are supposed to be just diagnostic, but does this become the new standard that you're basing growth on?
It's complicated. So, because that's what they're saying. It's diagnostic. Don't compare yourself to other people. You know, we certainly can't help but do that. And, and the reason that they say don't do that is because of circumstances. Like, I know that 40% of my department wasn't teaching.
Yeah.
So, but, so what we're doing is we're taking a mix of this data, but, and all data's worth the story that it tells, but our diagnostic data is a little bit more truth telling, I think, our in-house diagnostic data.
Okay.
So we did a lot of, we're still using a lot of the 2019 MCAS data. And what we're doing is looking at cohort data. So, and not to be too technical, but what a lot of this is doing is comparing 5th grade data to 5th grade data, not what our 4th grade kids did to our 5th grade. You know, it's not like building upon how those kids are performing each year, but we have district-wide diagnostic data that does tell that story. So we dive a lot heavier into that than we do into this.
Okay, that's good. Okay, that's good.
So here's, and to answer your question a little bit more thoroughly, so here's what we've done. So we dove into our cohort data in the diagnostic, and we dove into data going back to 2017. And we figured out where we're just falling flat and what we need to take responsibility for in terms of our teaching practices. So the numbers are one thing, but we wanted to know more about our actual student learning. So we dive in by standard, and we dive in by like, skill set that is required for the standards. So we looked at science, math, and ELA, and we, and we tried to develop themes. And we noticed that the types of questions that our students are underperforming at at Memorial require synthesis, analysis, and inferencing. So we know that students at Memorial have difficulty with critical thinking skills. And that's sort of, it shouldn't necessarily be surprising in, in a school and school redesign, we know that critical thinking, that's higher order questioning. So our kids are getting topical level questions, they can recall, that sort of stuff's great, but we need to get them more at bats and be more specific in teaching them the skills of critical thinking and using more specific strategies to do that. And it's not just giving them critical thinking questions, because we're giving them to them and they're not answering them well. So we actually have to teach them the art of critical thinking. And so we are embarking on an instructional focus of doing just that across all of the content areas. We had an independent company come in and do an analysis of our teaching, and they observed all of our different departments, and they confirmed our prognosis, so to speak, that we are just falling flat in that area. They've given us some feedback. We've brought in a vendor-focused schools to help us develop the specific strategies to teach critical thinking. And we are, we added professional learning community time, we added an additional hour to our schedule each week to work on this practice of doing just that. So we have the when, we have the what, and now we have the how. And this, I think that this is going to be pretty integral in getting to some of those higher order opportunities that our kids just weren't getting the proper instruction to be able to perform at the level that we, we want them to, so. These goals are just more technical. You know, we want to get from the 490 in ELA to that 500, and this is just a summary of more specifically how we're going to do that. And there's summaries of some of the other strategies that we're using to get to that 500. Because as you can imagine, we're doing two things in concert, really three things. We're trying to teach really solid core instruction, we're trying to get to some of that learning loss that our kids are, have incurred, and we're doing that through four 45-minute academic support sessions that are built into every student's daily schedule. Students have individual goal-setting meetings every six weeks with their teachers where they identify a goal based on their individual data, and they work on it during academic support where targeted remediation occurs. So the when, the how, and the what is, is all ironed out in a system there. And then on the fifth day of the week, students are receiving like, social emotional support with social emotional goals to make sure that we're also integrating that. Our attendance data was spectacular, quite frankly, for the pandemic last year at 18.4%. I have to admit that that's going to be a pretty difficult rate to top, given the context that we're in right now. But we are going to continue with some of our, some of the strategies that we were using last year. That was the best attendance rate we've ever had. But we were being pretty clever about some of our strategies, and, and I'm hoping that we can maintain those numbers. We beat our target by quite a bit, so it's just about maintenance at this point. And our math goal, we're just, we're rebuilding, because we lost a lot of time with a lot of key players of a very core department. So we're going back to, to where we were at in 2019. This is just a how we got our data, and how we built our plan. And on the right is, are some of the specific things that we're using to meet our goals. FISH is, is a transitional social emotional support for students. It stands for the Pittsburgh Initiative for Social Emotional Health. It's run by a behavior analyst and a registered behavior technician with a consulting occupational therapist and a clinical interventionist. And it has been fabulous. It's very similar to the Bright program at the high school. It's just sort of the middle school edition. It's new this year, it's packed, but it's certainly serving our students well. Any questions?
Just a quick question, and I guess for, for both of you tonight. Were you both principals at middle schools? Do you, as principals, teaching this same age group of students, meet and discuss and steal ideas from one to the other, et cetera, and try to, I'm not, I don't think, trying to figure out what I'm trying to ask you, but do you work together to see that hopefully that both middle schools are achieving the same goals in the same way, or?
I would love to be able to spend more time doing that. I think that it's, it's probably our goal to spend more time together. We haven't had a chance to spend as much time together as we would like. But I will say that not just at the middle school level, steal is, is probably a better term, but you know, I steal ideas from the elementary schools and the other, in McKay and the high school, yeah, we're always calling each other and trying to collaborate.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, sure.
How about the math department now? So you've, you said these issues have kind of resolved themselves, so is this, no?
Yeah, so they've certainly lessened with the presence of, of our more, you know, veteran faculty returning. But I will say that it's, it would be, I would be remiss not to acknowledge that there's certainly, you know, we're, we're reeling from the, like, the, the learning challenges of pandemic learning. We're still, we're still feeling it, and we do have to pivot from that.
Out of curiosity, on, on any given day, how many children are not, how many teachers are out?
You know, I think in the, in September, we were feeling it a little bit more. I think that the return was really hard on some folks, and I think we had one day where we had eight teachers out, and I think that that was our highest. But we still have some folks who are out on medical leaves. I don't know, it's just so happenstance. We had, we had eight maternity leaves going from the summer into the fall, so that was challenging, and then a couple people out on surgery. But it's, what we don't have, though, is a high number of just sick days, callouts, personal days. We're doing okay in that department. But if you get two or three coupled with some more scheduled things, and we are like everyone else, struggling with substitutes and whatnot. So it becomes a challenge either way, but people, people are, are showing up.
Okay.
And the move of the fifth grade out of the middle schools, are there any pros and cons, or any thoughts you wanted to share there?
I think we'll, we'll miss them. We have, we have some just really talented fifth grade teachers that I, that I think, so here's what I like. I like having four years
Yeah, that's fine, that's fine, yeah.
to work with kids. That scope is really great. You get to really know them and their plans and their needs deeply, and I think that that trajectory, we get to make more progress. But what I will say, though, is that a lot of really strong curriculums are meant from one to five, and then from six to eight. So from a logistics point of view, you're running two schedules in tandem that sometimes the cost is you lose on quality, because you're just trying to meet minutes and schedules and contracts and whatnot. So I think that having, to be able to meet kind of the muster of some curriculums that are really nuanced, having the model be the model can really serve students a lot better developmentally and, and just instructionally.
Great.
Thank you.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Good.
Thank you, Brittany.
Oh, I just had a quick question on, these pages aren't numbered, anyway, but on the day-to-day operations, so decreased discipline response, dismantling of in-house suspension?
Yes.
Could you, could you speak about that a little bit, because?
Sure. So we, we did away with in-house suspension, so Memorial Middle School doesn't have in-house suspension at all anymore. And so what we had found was Memorial didn't, when I got there, they didn't really utilize detention. And in retrospect, the in-house sort of replaced detention. And that was because of, I don't know if it was trust or communication or what the barrier was, but we didn't have good enough or strong enough relationships with our families to get students to stay for detention. And yet, the consequence needed to stand for whatever reason. And so kids would miss an entire day of instruction.
Right.
Which rolled and rolled, kids miss a day of instruction, they go back to class, they, you know, where am I, what are we doing? Perhaps I'll continue to misbehave because now I feel that I can't engage. And so we have much stronger relationships with families now, detention works. It's a lot, a lot of times, a much more logical consequence for the kind of things that we're seeing. And more importantly, we are being more preventative with FISH, because if kids are struggling in the classroom, in-house suspension ended up being used more as a holding tank for kids who really needed a break, or they needed counsel, or, and so what, the other principle of FISH is sort of teach, teach a person to fish. So in FISH, kids, during intake, they are, they're given, or they're, are helped to choose, they get a response plan to whatever their like, social emotional challenge is, and they practice that skill, that coping skill, in a vacuum with support. And then the whole point is independence with that coping skill. And so we were putting kids in in-house suspension, expecting them to learn a coping skill so that they wouldn't engage in that behavior again.
Yeah.
It didn't work. And I don't know why we expected it to work. So instead, we created a skill-building program, so they could be successful, and it is more successful. So we're feeling pretty good about that. And the teachers actually feel much more supported with FISH.
So you're utilizing detention?
Say that again?
You're utilizing detention?
Yes.
Yeah, that's, it's a good way, and by law, you can give 24-hour notice.
Yep. And the kids aren't missing out on learning opportunities.
Yeah, and sometimes, you know, you can make a call home and they say, yeah, keep them today, or. How are you handling detention? Is it being manned by teachers?
We're doing it right now. So we used to have teachers, you know, kind of on the honor system, they would all pick a day. Teachers are pretty spent right now, so we're taking it, myself and the assistant principals.
That's what we always used to do, that teachers
Yeah.
One day at a time, or sometime, we did for, for one week a year.
Yeah, for a little while, we're just trying to see what we can pick off, so the teachers can focus on what's happening during the, in the classroom.
I'm glad, I'm glad to see you do away with the in-house suspension.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's working, it's serving us now. But, you know, thankfully, the district is supporting us with the clinical folks that, so we can man this program.
And I'm glad to see the fifth grade going back, because a lot of times, the fifth grade is not ready, you know, for in middle school. And some of them, they're working on third and fourth grade skills, and now you're putting a fifth grader into middle school, but you really don't have, a lot of times, didn't you have the materials to deal with?
I mean, even having, we've had some, some fifth graders go through Memorial, and even though they have their own floor
Yeah.
It's still, you know, it's a lot to be in a middle school when you're nine, 10 years old, and, yeah.
Sometimes, back in elementary school, sometimes you can utilize a fourth grade teacher, you know, for some, they can, we used to move some kids around so they could get some skills in a different grade level, you know, and they were just with a different teacher, they didn't know they were, yeah, so, no, it looks good, Brittany.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brittany.
Thank you.
Okay, and to continue our middle school night here at school committee is Tricia May, principal of Longsjo Middle School, so, welcome, Tricia.
Thank you. Hi, everyone, thanks for having me.
Hi.
Hi, thanks for having me. Good job, Britt, those student growth percentiles in light of everything are really encouraging, so I'm excited for Memorial. Our plan, what I've done is I've attempted to synthesize the planning that's been happening. I went back around to 2017, when this job was posted in the summer, I actually began doing a lot of deep data diving to get a sense of where the school has been, and show up to talk about my interest in the school in an educated, intelligent way, understanding whether there have been great opportunities, and where there have been strengths, and where there have been apparent needs. So my slide deck is a little bit dense, I think, and so I'll leave it with you to review at your leisure as well. But I've tried to just at least capture the way that we have aligned our school improvement planning with the Massachusetts acceleration expectations, which are like, kind of beautifully aligned with the Pittsburgh district, public district strategic plan. So I'll show some visuals as to how we're trying to really line everything up nicely and build some shared momentum. The evidence-based focus area, I will say one thing about that. It's pretty ambitious, but I think it's necessary that students who are with us, and like Brittany was describing, we have a lot of diagnostic real-time information from students as they've returned to the building. And we're doing a lot with that data because it's really real. They're in front of us, they're showing us what they presently know, can do, understand. The, I think the goal needs to be that students who are returning to school at or around grade level will demonstrate at least as typical one or more years of growth academically. Students who are experiencing, I call it the slide, and the frustration that accompanies that, you know, bright, capable kids whose skills are not where they need to be yet, we're shooting for a year and a half of growth in mathematics, especially in number sense and operations, and reading comprehension. And it sounds ambitious, and I think it needs to be ambitious, and you'll see what I mean as we get to data. You folks know this perhaps, the last time DESI gave an accountability status was 2019. Longsjo Middle School at that time was at the seventh percentile statewide. This is interesting because it's percentage points, and so when we look at the whole school on the MCAS, I like that Brittany shared the student growth percentiles, and in retrospect, I'd love, if anyone wants further info, to go to the DESI website, but our student growth percentiles really are consistent with what we see in these data points also, in terms of loss of learning. And the next slide, when we disaggregated a bit and looked by grade level, we can see pretty quickly, if we look, say, for instance, at English Language Arts, and this is true across English, math, and science, our youngest and oldest students seem to have the biggest slides. And I really appreciate that eighth grade number, that's who Mr. Roach has received this year. And those students, it's very apparent, experience significant And those students, it's very apparent, experience significant struggles and slides and achievement. And I just think about those now ninth graders and know that we have so much to do for them to build their confidence and their skill. I imagine they're pretty stressed out, as are most of our young people, recognizing the work ahead to do. But I think those now ninth graders in particular are going to need a lot of our support and And again, anything you see, I love asking people, what do you see? If you, anyone wants to talk further about data by subgroup, I'm happy to talk at anyone's convenience. I always learn when I make meaning of data with others and they ask questions based on what they see. This is very dense. And quite frankly, a lot of kind of the same consistent dips. And this is just a visual of what I was sharing about. The Pittsburgh Public School's strategic plan has really, I think, powerful overall goals. And they're frugal. There aren't 28 of them. There are four major, high-impact goals of the strategic plan. And when the DESI's acceleration roadmap came out, when we were gathered this summer as a leadership team, it was really exciting because the goals of that roadmap are like super tightly aligned with the work that the district had already been doing with the strategic plan. So it just marries one another beautifully. So we're not going in many directions. It's really cohesive. And so what we've done for Long Joe is we've aligned our sustainable improvement targets directly with that nice alignment. So we have, the next slide is also really dense. We have four improvement strategies. They say 1222 typo, 1234. And then underneath those strategies are our overarching goals that are directly aligned to the acceleration roadmap from DESI. And it is just really beautifully aligned. And from here, of course, we have much more dense work plans, goals, strategies aligned to each of these that are measurable, that we'll hold ourselves accountable for. But this is the big overarching picture in terms of continuous monitoring of student progress, frequent monitoring. And just in time is the language of the state scaffolds and supports and response as we're doing that continuous monitoring. And there, the last goal on here is all about a sense of welcoming and belonging, which I know is like the umbrella of the district in terms of what we're creating in our school communities. And for me, this is synonymous with attendance. So the better we get at all of the goals and strategies associated with number four, the more we'll see our attendance improve. That's us. Paul and Michelle were with me right before I came down here and I actually told them to go home. We have another big day tomorrow. And I'd rather have them functioning in the morning with rest, but they send their regrets and they wanted to be here tonight. We were all hired in August. Is that correct, folks? All three of us, in, appointed to these official positions in August? I couldn't have, I couldn't be luckier that, this is, this is an amazing team. So Paul had been the SPSA prior at Long Joe, has deep, deep knowledge of Long Joe, answers hundreds of questions a day to put things in context. Michelle was a special education teacher at Long Joe Middle School. And I think literally, two days before her retirement pulled her papers to return to Long Joe and serve the community in the role of SPSA. So it's, this, I'm very, very excited about this team. And lastly, I call this a plan on a page. And this is where the rubber meets the road. On the right are very, very specific targets and measures that we need to meet. And on the left is the fundamental goals aligned to the school's tagline as we read, we write, we think, we win. Because in Pittsburgh, I learned years ago as a Red Raider, once a Red Raider, always a Red Raider, and we are competitive. So that is in the school's tagline, we win. And for us, winning is about setting student-specific goals, continuously monitoring progress on those goals. And something that Carrie Purcell from one of the supports that we have, someone who I've admired a long, long time, I'm actually getting to work with directly right now. Thank you very much. She's going to help us learn how to celebrate often. Because in school, we just, we're like snowplows, let's go. And I think that we're going to have a lot to celebrate and we're going to be looking often for those opportunities to celebrate. And that's how we're going to win this year. And we're going to win also by creating the safe and supportive environment that we all deserve. And another measure I've found helpful is the HOPE scale, the Children's HOPE scale, which is really simply a quick measure. It's only five items, has good research behind it, and helps us understand students' sense of efficacy. And do they see a future? Do they see a pathway to it? And I'm excited about just doing that check-in frequently as well. And I think I'm also very optimistic. So yeah, we have a lot of work ahead and we have an amazing faculty, lot of new folks this year. People are coming to Long Joe Middle School to teach and learn for the right reasons. They know we're doing hard work. They know it's ambitious work and they want to be part of it. And the folks that we're hiring, one by one, it's grueling hiring right now, but one by one, we're finding all-stars who want to be at Long Joe for all the right reasons. All seven, 667 reasons. So it's an exciting time to be there. Thank you, folks. I'll take any questions. I'll answer those I can. And those I can't, I'll ask Paul tomorrow and get back to you.
Well, I'd just like to welcome you back to Pittsburgh Public Schools.
Thank you. So good to be here, Mr. Stevens. Thank you so much. Yeah, I feel honored to be here. Thank you.
Look forward to seeing the results.
So are we. Yeah. Yeah, it's, it's exciting. The students, I think it's that discrepancy, and I've been thinking about that. I do get to spend time with Britt, to your question to her, because Bob pulls us together on a regularly scheduled basis as leadership teams, where we address important topics, where he attempts to take care of us and keep us healthy and well, and where we can share information. So I do feel fortunate on those days of the week when we're all gathered collaboratively as principals. So maybe one day, Britt and I can spend a lot more time together. But for now, I'm grateful that we're in the same room online, at least once a week.
In person.
Yeah, eventually.
But it's going to be good with the redistricting. You're both going to have, it's going to be two schools, you're going to be able to cooperate much easier.
Yeah.
And it's different from a K where they're a free K to eight. So it's, it's going to make it easier for you.
Yeah, and I really appreciate what Brittany said about, you know, the curricula and that in order to really roll that curriculum out, and we have access to so much beautiful curricula right now, which is new for us, you know, in schools in general. We're used to being very lean and resourceful. And so having these new curricula is a beautiful thing and a big commitment on the part of teachers to learn how to deliver them skillfully. So that's another reason teachers, I think, are really exhausting their resources because they're also learning to deliver these beautiful tools and resources. And to do that with integrity, it is K through five. And sometimes, as much as those fifth graders, I tell them they're my favorite, but I won't admit that to the sixth or seventh or eighth graders because they are, they're little and they are segregated. They have their own floor at Long Joe Middle School and their teachers are like mama and Papa Bears. It's a different, different model. And we keep trying to fit it into the schedule and the other variables of a middle school world. And we're making it work, but it, there are disconnects and the curriculum is the biggest one, so.
Brings back memories for me, for Don Cummings and I, 1981. We created the middle schools. We went from a seven, eight, nine junior high school to a six, seven, eight middle school. So we were very much involved with the Middle School Association, Jim Garvin, reading his book, To Kiss a Frog, and, you know. So it's, you've got your work cut out after this last year of the pandemic and.
Yeah.
And the changing grades, so.
Yeah.
We'll, we'll support you.
Thank you. Yeah, I feel it already. Thank you very much.
We have, Bob's team has a lot of resources, so.
Yeah.
Take advantage of them.
Yeah, I feel very fortunate. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, what do we got? And I think we need, we need to.
We're done?
We're done with the superintendent's report.
Yep.
We were remiss in not, in not electing an alternate delegate. I don't know if we have an alternate. Is anybody going to be? I'm nominating Jim Walsh. Yeah, Jim? Thank you, James.
You don't know what I'm doing under my mask right now.
All in favor, say aye. Aye, I'll second that. In all likelihood, Mr. Walsh, you won't have to do anything because Mr. Stevens will be there to.
All right.
To ban you out, okay? Mr. Walsh was always there with me. Is that okay?
All right.
Is that okay, Jim?
That's fine.
All right, great. So that's my motion to nominate Mr. Walsh. I'll second, I'll second Mr. Walsh. Motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, it is unanimous. We did have an executive session this evening. However, the city solicitor has asked, is requesting that the matter be taken off the agenda and then a subsequent executive session rescheduled sometime in the future, either at the next school committee meeting or the one immediately thereafter. I'll make a motion to take the executive session off the agenda.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to remove executive session, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, it is unanimous. We have a motion to adjourn.
Still moved.
Motion made and seconded to adjourn, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, we are adjourned.